We're again at the Chapel Town Hall for tonight's town meeting.
It started, sir, all part of a particular group or just curious?
All seniors.
Perfect. Of the committee?
Of both groups, just seniors.
Oh, good. Particular reason, something you're looking for, or just out?
Right now, we're attending and following procedures.
Perfect, good. Well, welcome. Glad to see everybody out.
I actually know Alex, but is there something on the agenda that I'm not aware of?
Me too, because nobody can.
Yes, I can.
I'm so excited.
You're gonna do it?
Yes.
To meet Monday, October 20, 2025, to order at 6:30 PM, right on the nose. Indigenous and African acknowledgement, the municipality Chapel situated Sisyo Treaty entitled by Nishapiakris people in treaty nine area and recognizes the neighboring First Nations of Brunswick Coast, Chapel Creek, Chapel Ojibwe, Mishpikotin, and Missinawee Creek. We acknowledge long history of the First Nation and Métis people in Ontario and show respect to them today. Approval of the agenda, whereas members of council have represented with an agenda for the regular council meeting on Monday, October 20, 2025, and be a result that agenda be adopted as amended. One item in camera, human resources, and one item under new business regarding that tax sale process and one item under hometown takeover. Kai, please have a mover.
I'll second.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Any discussion? Better? There we go.
We're seniors over here.
I don't want to seem like I'm yelling at you, because then I'm gonna get in trouble.
That's okay.
All right. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. All right, any disclosure, preliminary interest, councillors? Kathy?
No.
None? Alex?
No.
Paul? Good. Myself, none. Okay. Delegations, we don't have any committee of adjustment, we don't have one. Consent the agenda, where is council township Chapel review the consent of agenda consisting of 6.1 council committee minute innings, 6.11 regular council meeting minutes of Monday, October 6, 2025, 6.12 meeting minutes of the library board of April 16, 2025, 6.13 minute meeting minutes of library board, May 21st, 2025, 6.14 meeting minutes of the library board, June 18th, 2025, and 6.15 meeting minutes of Chapel Regional Economic Development Corporation of Monday, August 11, 2025. Now therefore be resolved that the township Chapel does hereby approve the regular council meeting minutes of Monday, October 6, 2025, and that the council does hereby receive the library board minutes of April 16, 2025, May 21st, 2025, and June 18th, 2025. And that furthermore that the council hereby receives the Chapel Regional Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes of August 11, 2025. Kai, please have a mover.
I'll move.
Moved by Alex, seconded by?
I'll second.
Paul. Any discussion?
Point on our last minutes from our October 6 meeting, so Resolution 271 on the emergency calls. So there was some discussion on the extent and we weren't really sure if Allen's truck stop exists and it's still in the minutes. I was wondering if we could tighten that up to be exactly what that is, because it's Highway 129 to Allen's Truck Stop, but I don't think that's.
Aubrey Falls.
Yeah, they figured it.
Yeah, we just think.
Can we fix that in the minutes?
Good idea, yes.
Aubrey Falls, their trading post, actually, it's not truck stop, trading post.
Thank you.
Yep, you're correct on that, councillor Alex. Any other?
Meeting minutes for the CREDC. So it's a little tricky, because these are the minutes August 11, so I feel like I might be one or two meetings behind, but there was one point on their amendments on that meeting. So there were a couple of amendments to the previous minutes, one was on. Bring them up here. There were three amendments, one was resignation of Richard. There's no context on it, not that it's necessarily there, but I just question that amendment if there was. So the spelling of Tracy Wessell's name makes sense for an amendment?
Yeah.
The RBC account being closed, but not sold, that makes sense. Richard, I got the resignation as an amendment, I wasn't sure why that was amended minutes.
If I may, Ryan, so the amendment for Richard was on Richard, but he's still on the CREDC.
Yep.
Correctly from what you did, that was the resignation of a commercial management group?
Uh, no, it actually was the resignation of Richard as a director with the corporation.
My fault.
He didn't want that level of responsibility, so he's happy to be a member and he is still on the board, but he's no longer a director of the corporation.
Yeah, so I know from discussing that that's kind of what happened, but I was wondering if that could be a little bit tightened up, because he's still on the board, right? As, so he's still a member of the board, that would be good to make that clear, because just reading it, it looks like he's not.
Yep. And then in the next minutes, you'll see that he's still on the board, so.
Okay, yeah, again, that's like a couple of meetings behind.
Yep, no problem, good catch.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Now therefore, I'm sorry, as amended. Any, no other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor as amended? Carrie. Business 7.1 fence height discussion bylaw that council does hereby direct staff to start the process of a zoning amendment within the township to allow for fence up to eight foot or eight foot two inches. Kai, please have a mover.
I'll move to enter into discussion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kathy, moved by Paul. On, open for discussion. Paul?
So this item here is one that was brought to my attention this summer. Through construction season, people start to construct decks and fences. And most recently, within the township Chapel, we do have some zoning variances or minor variances where people have built larger fences than expected. Other cities, including St. Marie, Timmins, and so forth, have started to look at amending their bylaws to meet provincial standards to allow for up to an eight-foot fence. The reason for that is, one, decks are being built larger and higher, so they want that privacy. The second reason is just property security, again, people not jumping fences at an eight-foot level. And third, noise, right? We live in small communities around trucks, rail, so the purpose for this one is to be consistent with other municipalities and allow for that increase in fence to their backyard to be consistent with those three.
Just for clarity, that's not on the front?
It is not on the front. Where is it, for example, the city of St. Marie, the first two sections, so it'd be 16 feet, are still at the four-foot level for allow for when to back up. You're not gonna, you're not creating a problem with pedestrians or other vehicles, it's mostly your side and backyard.
Okay, any further discussion?
Do we have input from the town on that matches up as councillor Paul says?
Through you, Mr. Mayor? Yes, as a matter of fact, I've reached out to Matt Alexander, he's our planner. And he said that a lot of municipalities are moving to the eight, eight feet two inch, which is the maximum height in the Ontario building code.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, that being heard. Any other further discussion, do we have an impasse on going to that, or are we ready to roll?
Through you, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Um, so the next step of council is amenable to this is to put it to our planners to create an amendment to our town zoning bylaw. And then we can be able to make that change.
Is that what we want to help happen, council?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, can you send it for amendment, please? Thank you. Bear bin location. That the council township Chapel does hereby support staff and bring a report back to council and statistics over the past several months of the issues with the bear bin current locations, and that council hereby support the placement of additional bin at Cedar Grove area and at the arena to meet the current needs. Kai, please have a mover.
I'll move for discussion.
Seconded?
I'll second.
Kathy, open for discussion, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, so earlier this spring, so I asked this item to be identified on the agenda. Earlier this spring, we had identified the need for kind of a review of the number of bear bins we have, as well as a location, because during long weekends, we're seeing garbage everywhere. That is poor use on our public works department, they're raking, they're cleaning up. We saw it again this weekend as a long weekend all over the place. People picking up garbage in their yards. So what I've asked for this to be identified is, we need to have public works come back and talk about the location of those bins. Should they be centralized into locations and monitored with our camera system? So that those who are throwing things that should not be thrown in there are garbage everywhere. And the second one is, we did purchase additional bins to be located at Cedar Grove in other locations, just based on demand, right? So if we're gonna continue having bear bins centrally located everywhere, then we need to ensure we have enough bins to meet public demands, including weekends. So if we're gonna go that route, then add the bins. So what I'm asking for is that we actually get a report back from from Reg in terms of the location and whether or not we should be moving it to more central locations. In the spring was identified as two locations, perhaps the arena, perhaps on this side. And those be monitored, so we're not running into the problems we're.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, it's one issue that's been biting us, I think, since the beginning of council is where to put the bear bins. People agree that it should be cleaned up, but then when we say to move them or restrict access, people don't want to go for it. So my question is, is the cameras, are we seeing any statistics that there's less garbage being left outside the bins before we add more bins?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we've actually been doing gathering statistics since February of this year. And Reg is prepared to bring that report to council. Um, he feels that he does have enough information to sort of feel like they've got a good idea of what the community needs. So I've asked him if he could possibly have it for the next meeting, and he indicated he could. So we will bring a report for it in the next.
I agree with councillor Paul that more bear bins are good, but before moving in that direction, I think we do need those statistics, because we've done a lot of work to make sure that out-of-town residents are going to the dump and we've been as proactive as we can, but still, if we put in more bear bins and it's just gonna be extra garbage outside, I think that'll just be another headache for council.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, I just need 10 seconds, I just have to ask a question. Okay. Right. So at this time, I need to read a statement to an individual in the report, the individual has his name mentioned, I have to do a public apology. October 16, 2025, complaint form dated September 25, 2025. We wish to acknowledge receipt of your complaint. And as it claimed that the report contained your name, we acknowledge that this is an oversight and that your name was included in a report to council, and we've removed your name from the record and in the permanent records. We also read this acknowledgement out of council meeting on October 20 and 25 in hopes this measure rectifies the situation. On behalf of the township Chapel, Ryan Bignucklow, mayor. And I hope this resolves the issue. Thank you very much to the complainant for bringing us to my attention, I greatly appreciate it. And I hope that this breaks a conclusion to that investigation. Council payable, that council township, sorry, council corporation township Chapel does hereby receive the information, accounts payable listing, any amount of $1,038,344 for the period ending October 15, 2025, that's the biggest one we've done.
Yes.
Since elected, this is the biggest. Kai, please get a mover.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I think you were second on that one.
I was second on that.
I'm gonna give that one to Kathy.
I kind of.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Paul. Open for discussion and questions? Probably some of them are asking, why is this so big this time? What about, I believe it had pioneer?
It did.
So we did a bunch paving for everybody that's here, we did a bunch paving the community, and that check came to 700.
700 and.
And some, I signed it, I signed the check, because we had to send a check because of the post office. We can't do e-transfers over a certain amount. And I'm sure some of you drove in on some very nice smooth pavement in the community. And hopefully a loved one didn't have to get flown out at the airport, but if they did, they had a much better takeoff and a much better landing coming home. So, no, it was really, really bad though, like, um, very, very serious, like a plane's landing and you have a hump like this. Like, we gotta fix that kind of stuff, and we gotta take that kind of stuff in our community very seriously, and we do as council. And it has been addressed, and now we do have a nice 5,000-foot runway, which, you know, are, we're very, very fortunate in Chapel. We have the ministry landing for firefighting usage. And basically, our airport is free to the taxpayer and actually generates money. So we were able to do these things, because we were fortunate enough to save up for that, and I mean, it's good for the community. All right.
I've got a question on that, Ryan?
Yep.
Thanks for the explanation. Um, yeah, so it's a matter of public record, 767,000 out of the 1,038,000. And I was wondering, but what's the biggest, it is the biggest.
Yep.
Hoping someone had a question. Anyways, so at our previous meeting, we had approved this and discussed this, but in the amount of 680,000 roughly? So is that the HST, the extra, HST comes out to close to 100,000 in that case? Okay, so that's why, and it is numbered a little differently on there, I don't know why it's numbered differently, but.
Um, it wasn't an EFT, through you, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't an EFT, like the other payments we make?
Okay.
It was an actual check.
All right, because it was above our limit for an EFT.
Yeah, I remember that, I'm approving an extra.
Yep, so when I signed it, I asked, why are we doing a check, because we don't sign checks anymore, but that was the answer to it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. All right, Resolution 9.1 EV charger station agreement, that the bylaw 2025-54 being the bylaw entered to an agreement with the Ontario Charging Network LP by its general partner, 258-7265Ontario Inc. For the current maintenance of two fast chargers and EV to be read a first S and a second time on this day of the 20th, 2025. And for re-read a third time and passing promptly signed and sealed this 20th of October, 2025. Kai, please have a mover.
I'll move.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Alex. Any discussion? Just for a matter of record?
Oh, no.
Okay, just, just for a matter of record, you're gonna see a numbered company that will come that is owned by a company that I own, and I am getting no financial gain. I actually donated the property to the community, so we can have a charging station closer to the downtown core. And not here at the township, we were looking at putting it here, but it doesn't help people that go to charge a car here and then come from downtown and carry all their groceries down to here. So we donated a spot across from the church, you're gonna see an EV charging station go there, and it's on property owned by myself, and it is free of charge to the community. Would not be compensated, that's why I didn't declare conflict of interest, just for the record.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, also to let everybody here know, this was at no cost to the township at all. Um, everything was part of our negotiations with Hydro One when they bought out our PUC. Um, they offered at that time to put a two-fast, high-speed or something charging stations into our community. Normally, it could cost around $600,000 to have that done, but we pay nothing for it.
So another bonus for the community. All right.
You really don't want me to ask a question?
Go ahead.
You got two steps ahead there, right, because that was my main question. Who are we entering agreement with? And then that's being answered.
The general partner is the.
Yeah, you answered it, that's.
Yeah, and then I'm just the property owner. Yep.
And then kind of that was the main one, the fall, whenever there's like a five-page bylaw.
Yep.
Then we find, I'm wondering what the cost of the township is, you're also.
Yep.
Step ahead there, so that was my question, and this is the answer.
When we did the hydro agreement, we said we were getting a charger on the in-camera. This was part of the agreement.
And I guess we could just underline the length of the agreement, if I read that correctly, it's a five-year agreement, right? Or, and then the agreement by council.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions?
That's good.
Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. All right, correspondence. A, B, and C. That council township Chapel receives correspondence from the October 20 council agenda for the following extract for discussions. Is there any to be extracted? Hearing none, all in favor? Sorry, I need a motion.
Yeah.
I jumped the gun.
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Kathy. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, now we can say all in favor. There we go. Carrie. See, they don't always go as you want them to go. All right, new business, Chapel Cross Country event?
Okay, I shared.
Alex.
Thanks. I shared with council, there's copies at the back too. Color page on Wednesday, Arlie Batum is hosting the Chapel Cross Country Meet. This event was around last year. It does involve using Riverside Drive to the end of the bus loop from about 10 AM to 11:30. The rest of the race is pretty much on the trails, and then around the M and R loops. So we just advertised for it, we found last year sharing with the fire department and having our marshals there, there were no issues. I mean, it's not tons and tons of kits, but we do have Wawa coming in this year to compete with the Chapel Finest. So we're looking forward to that Wednesday morning, and we just want to get the word out for that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We also put it on our community bulletin board as well.
Okay, tax sale 11.2, tax sale tender opening will be here at the municipal, everyone is welcome, Thursday, October 23rd at 3 PM, in the boardroom upstairs. There'll be a tender opening.
Actually, we have a discussion today, I think that we decided to move the dam here in case it's a lot.
Correction, it will be down in this room. Which is called?
The council chambers.
Council chambers, there it is. Gotta have the correct name for the record. Okay.
Could I just speak a few things about what we're doing?
Yeah.
Great.
Go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so on Thursday, shortly after 3 PM, we're going to be going through the process of opening all the tenders for all the tax sale homes in our community. And we will, each envelope goes through a number of checklists. And then the, the properties, each property is sort of rated. And at the end of the meeting, everything will be announced during the meeting of what the bids were and essentially who the successful number one spot is. That will then allow the successful bidder has 14 days to pay the balance of what's owed, because they do give a deposit when they put their bid in. And so they have 14 days with which to, to pay the balance, and then the property is theirs. Any properties that don't sell will be brought back for consideration of either we vest the property, meaning the municipality takes over the ownership, and then we can sell it for whatever we choose to, or we can go through a repost process. But if it just went through the posting process, chances of it sparking some interest, I think, would be low. So, um, once we get through this process, this will be our first round of tax sales, and we have one more round coming in early 2026.
Which that list is bigger than the one that we just did?
Slightly bigger, yes.
So with that being said, there's a motion I'd like to read, that the council township of Chapel.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, there's no questions. Council meeting, it's very important meeting, no problem.
That's why we're here.
New visitor, learning all the rules? No, and I appreciate questions like that, but they're there, but if you'd like to make a question, it's a good point to bring, is you send them in writing that you'd like to speak, and by all means, we bring you up, we put you on the agenda, and that's how that process is done. And if there's anything that's not clear, it's reach out to Judy.
Call me.
Call her, have a chat, you know, and be happy to discuss anything, okay? And then main purpose of that is to be more educated with the question that's coming in, have the right information, so that we're not dealing with a council after council after council meeting, okay? All right, thank you. All right. So, that council township Chapel does hereby appoint mayor and CAO. On behalf of council, the authority use reasonable means to protect the properties in the tax sale process.
I'll move for discussion.
Move for discussion, can I get a second there?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kathy. Okay, opening up for discussion is, the reason for this is we might have some properties that don't sell, but we might be in a position to do something else with them, and it's, this is our first time going through the process, and what this does is give us the means to do whatever we need in the best interest of our corporation, i.e. the rate payer, the taxpayer. And we're asking for that permission from council. If there's something that we have overlooked or haven't seen or been new to this process, is the ability to do until we get to the next council meeting, is it here? This is what happened, this is what we did, and here's what's going on. Any questions?
So if it doesn't sell, then it basically stays with the town, and it'll come back to a discussion, or?
Absolutely not, go on.
Yeah, so no, so if it does not sell, then we have to actually make the decision to what's called invest it. And investing it means we take on all responsibilities with that property, and then we can do what we want with it, we can fix it up and sell it, we can just sell it for whatever price, just to have it, you know, be off our books and be done with. We, we would, by vesting it, we take ownership of it.
So an example of such is, let's say we have a property in the community that owes the township 100,000 dollars. Okay, but we don't, and it's on the list, let's say it's on the list, and this is a fictitious number, ladies and gentlemen, okay, let's not jump to conclusions here for the record. Because we are being recorded, I just want to make sure we're not going down a path that we're not supposed to. So let's say something, I'm giving you, this is the example, it comes up at 100,000 dollars, we don't get a bid on it, well then we, we say, yeah, you know, we're gonna take our chances on that, we vest it into our corporation, and then we can sell it, and let's say we get 50,000, well, that's 50,000 that the taxpayer wouldn't have seen. And then all of a sudden, we're revenue generating off that property. So now it becomes taxpayer again, which brings money into our coffers, which, you know, my ultimate goal is, council's ultimate goal, I shouldn't have said mine. Our mutual goal is not to lift taxes, right? So how do we do that? Get the most income we can from every single property, and also capture every single one of them, that's why we're doing this. We're not doing this to be malicious. Bad, yeah, malicious to people or anything like that. It's, there's a lot of people in this room that pay their taxes, and unfortunately, there's some that don't. And we need everybody to pay them in order to keep it low. And then it's a recorded amount that's bad debt on our books, and we gotta bring that number down. When we came in, it was 2 million dollars, and it's coming down. It's coming down drastically. And everybody should be real happy here that it is, because when cash like that comes, that goes into our cash flow, and that reduces our chances of having to lift our taxes really heavy. And this is the main purpose of this, this isn't to signal out people, this isn't to put people out of their homes, this is to make it equal. And there's a lot of people that work really, really hard in this room to pay their taxes. We have to recognize that, and we have to make sure that the people that aren't are paying, point blank. And then there's no room for that. So either you pay, or the township does something about it. And that's a loud message that we're pushing.
If I could build on there, but enough of those comments, just to put into perspective, the debt that we were monitoring was traditionally the size of the city, almost the size of Timmins. Forty to 50,000 people will average that tax arrears. We're a town of 1,800. So the impact on, on the taxpayers is massive, it's significant. So, again, to Ryan's point, we weren't doing anything to be malicious, but it's important to ensure we're working best interest of our taxpayers.
And just for the audience's benefits, you guys. And, and just for the audience's benefits, you guys seem to really be absorbing a lot of information and I like that. One percent of our tax, so when we say, hey, we're gonna lift taxes one percent, that means thirty-one thousand dollars. Just so everybody knows the number in, in the audience, thirty-one thousand dollars is one percent of our budget. So, let's say we collect, somebody makes their back taxes and they pay thirty-one thousand dollars, we don't have to lift taxes. Because they got paid, now we have that cash. So, everybody says, oh geez, you guys are really, really hard on it, yeah, it's a lot of money for everybody in this room. And, and we're not stopping. People need to pay their taxes. And yes, we have another big list, I, I know, I learned quite a bit of people, the, the next list is coming, is bigger. But I'm telling you, people gotta get caught up, they gotta pay. There's a lot of hardworking people here that paid and that has to continue. We need to bring that number down, can't be two million dollars. You know, yes, we're gonna have some, but that number has to come down and it's gonna come down. And that's what council wants to see, correct?
Right.
Absolutely.
Alex?
We could put the council, put a lot of, if you wanna say pressure on the township to, when it comes to the budget, that's our big job, is the budget to keep taxes low and it's a lot of work. But I think we've been working hard towards that and we're, you know, you can read about other towns, small towns in Northern Ontario, what they're struggling with. And uh, yeah, we don't wanna be in a situation um, like some of our other northern towns, for sure.
And we feel that it's not the appropriate thing to say to people, we're gonna have taxes by six percent this year and then not go collect two million dollars. I, I can't do that, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't. We, we gotta go collect the two million dollars before you ask for any other money. If, if we collect that and then we can't make it, then we gotta come? Okay, but you gotta do your best to this amount and that's what we're doing. All right, no added comments on that? Okay. Can I get a, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie, you know. Okay, did I miss something?
Yep, we're right on schedule.
Okay, hometown takeover. Alex?
So, this is something I like to see, there's a citizen who uh, said, can, can say Alex do this, do that, they said, I'll do something and uh, he just said, fine, come, so we, we went to Gwen's uh, meeting for the uh, hometown takeover, so the television show that comes to small towns, uh, mostly in the States and they fixed up uh, lots of things, murals, uh, storefronts, uh, you know, what, what they can do is called HGTV, you may have seen it, so they're coming to Canada. Gwen said she's got experience doing uh, bids, she's, we had to get it together fast, so we met on October thirteenth after the last meeting. She has uh, put together the application, which is due November first, we're gonna meet tomorrow. So, councillor Kathy and myself, we've been just supporting from council side, again, not spearheading it, just being aware. And if we're successful, then uh, we, we'll be on TV. If we're not successful, we still had a nice, big group of people who are really interested in improving the town, come together and uh, and they'll wanna take care of some things uh, as a group anyways. So, look forward to reporting uh, back on the uh, success of the bid.
Uh, Alex questioned, do you need a letter of support or anything from me on that?
Uh, we're, like I said, we're meeting tomorrow, I'll, anything that comes out of that will bring you right away.
Okay, no problem, yeah, and I'll make myself available for that, that's important. Thank you for. All right, anything further on that topic? Okay. So, adjourn to in camera session at uh, council corporation township Chapel, moving to in camera session on Monday, October twentieth at seven oh three PM for the following matters, in camera discussion meeting, it's a regular council meeting of September twenty second, twenty five and October sixth, twenty five, personal honors, a vote and identifying individual, including municipal and local boards pursuant to Ontario Municipal Act section two three nine two B, due resources, two items, can I please have a mover?
I'll move, I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Kathy, the main discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Carrie, we're now in camera.
Would you please explain to people what, what subjects you discuss in an in camera meeting?
Yes, so.
Generally?
Let's say you worked for the corporation.
Yeah.
And we had a disagreement or a legal issue or something that needed to come to council's attention, we would be discussing you at the meeting.
Okay.
Um, union contracts, negotiations, something that um, let's say somebody requested some information from us and we weren't sure how to handle it and we were asking for legal opinion, because that's not something that we deal, we would use that integrity commissioner. We would use that, let's say I wasn't sure how to handle something and I'm discussing it, we get uh, legal advice on uh, different things, uh, sale Hydro One was all in camera because uh, general public, it's a publicly traded company, you have to do that with uh, in camera and that, you can't disclose those things and you wouldn't, right?
They talked about the contract conditions, referred, referred to a sale, that was a sale.
Yes, so that was an example, you said it for Hydro One, Hydro One was an example, let's say um, geez, there's.
The legal advice that we were given was why we were in camera for. Okay, yeah.
Taxation sales, besting properties, you need legal advice, okay, well, what's our next step with this? What's the implications of that? How do we keep the township safe? That's where you talk about those things and those things are relevant, are in camera and you get legal advice, sometimes you have a lawyer on the phone, sometimes you have the integrity commissioner, also it's to keep like the mayor in check. Okay, what can I say and what I can't say, what am I allowed to tell the public when they come? You know, and the integrity commissioner would, you would have a call, they would say, okay, you could say this, but you can't say this, you could say this, but you can do this, and those are important things that we need to know, right? At the end of the day, always remember the township is a business, right? Files financial statements, does all the different things. So, we gotta make sure that we do all, we follow all the rules. All right?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna go into in camera, thank you very much for the strong attendance and I honestly hope to see you all again.
More people. Can you also clarify, Ryan, number twelve on the agenda, the confirmatory bylaw, it's not actual item, right? It's like confirming last week's agendas in minutes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the confirmatory bylaw is a mechanism that councils use to ensure that everything discussed at the meeting is um, is passed and confirmed, agreed to. So, even if there's conversation that didn't get captured in the minutes, the gist of what was spoken through that confirmatory bylaw allows us to continue to do business.
Understood, because you do reconvene for that one after, but it's not new discussion or anything?
It is not, not at all.
Thank you for coming. All right, everyone.
Thanks for watching, if you want to send us a story, you can send us an email to nocaudits@gmail.com. Don't forget to subscribe and see you next time.